Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our special meeting. It's on the North Idaho Fair Master Plan. It is July 22, 2024. The time is 10:01 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Mattari Brooks and Duncan. Are there changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Public comment? Okay, hearing none. We'll get down to our first item. This is the master plan. This is actually workshop for the...
Our meeting is on the North Idaho Fair Master Plan.
Yeah, folks, if you are watching online, you will have to mute that. And mute yourself until you're ready to, until you're called on. This is for the Board of County Commissioners to go over the new final draft of the Idaho State Fair Master Plan. So, Alexia Jordan, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners and guests. Thank you for being here today. My name's Alexia Jordan. I am the General Manager and CEO of the North Idaho State Fair and Cooten County Fairgrounds. Let me see if I can figure out how to do slides. I can. Look at that. Too far. You gonna be able to see? All right. So today, I am honored to introduce some of our guests that are going to, that have been with the team behind this master plan. Joining us today are Fair Board members Linda Ryder, Kevin Kirke, Mike McLean, and Jessica McLean. From KO Architects on the phone, we've got Chip Overton and Sarah Overton, as well as from Crossroads Consulting, we have Susan Seager and Travis Crank, who specialize in fairgrounds and have helped hundreds of fairs across the country, including several in Idaho. So for the sake of time, we will keep this presentation very concise and to the point at a very high level, skipping over any information that you might already be familiar with. Once we've concluded upon the presentation, we'll open up for Q and A. You guys can answer any, or we can answer any questions that you might have. And we are incredibly excited to share this journey with you and look forward to your support as we embark on this very transformative project. So with that, one more thing to keep in mind. This is a public meeting, not a public hearing. So should there be time for public comment, we will, we will get to that. Is that accurate to state?
Yes. So the difference between a public hearing and a public meeting, public hearing is designed to hear from the audience or the participants. This is a public meeting, and there is public comment, but it's, that's not the purpose of the meeting.
Thank you. So with that, Mike will take it over.
Commissioners, thank you. Today marks an exciting moment as we unveil the master plan workshop for the Cooten County Fairgrounds, a vision that promises to continue and enhance our community hub into a beacon of education, entertainment, and economic growth. This plan is, is not just about the physical development. It's about the nurturing and thriving environment that we, that every resident, every resident can flourish. At the heart of this master plan is the opportunity to enhance both education and entertainment for our residents. Imagine a fairgrounds bustling not only during the 10 days of the fair, but year-round, offering educational workshops, cultural events, and recreational activities that enrich the lives and bring our community closer together. Securing a long-term lease is crucial for creating stability and longevity. It lays the foundation for sustained growth and allows us to plan ambitiously for the future. With stability assured, we can attract investments, foster partnerships, and innovate boldly, all to the benefit, benefit for our residents. Leadership, as we understand it here, is not about power, but about vision and responsibility. Our primary duty as leaders is to promote the well-being of our people. The master plan for the fairgrounds exemplifies this commitment by prioritizing community services that enhance the quality of life, support local businesses, and celebrate our own unique identity. For our Commissioners, the decision to secure a long-term lease represents an opportunity for each of you to leave a long-lasting, positive legacy. Future generations...
Sorry to interrupt you, but the long-term lease is not on the agenda. So this is just about the master plan? So I, I just want to make that clarification on, on that.
We do know that. We just, it is, we cannot move forward with this master plan unless that does come to fruition at a later meeting.
Okay.
It's just a, a point I think he's trying to make. Sorry.
Go ahead.
This would be the long-lasting legacy. Future generations will remember your foresight and dedication as we enjoy revitalized fairgrounds throughout the year. This is not just about present. It's about laying the groundwork for a vibrant future that we all can be proud of. Together, we can embrace the vision, ignite our collective passion, and shape the fairgrounds that serves a cornerstone, cornerstone of our community by investing in education, entertainment, and economic growth. Together, we can ensure that Cooten County continues to thrive for generations to come. So Phase One, building a livestock, building expo hall. I will talk a little bit about the, about the livestock building. Obviously, this is, we have well over 300 youth that participate in livestock every year at our fair through 4H and our ever-expanding FFA programs. Timberlake High School has a thriving FFA program. Lakeland also has that. Pulse Falls High School, which is now the largest high school in Cooten County, has just started their FFA program with big goals and aspirations for it to continue to grow. So a livestock expo, livestock building like this would be something that would be imperative for the youth, especially with the, with the influx of people moving to our area who may not have traditional agricultural backgrounds. FFA and 4H is an opportunity to allow new opportunities for, for kids and families who may not have been born into agriculture, but to experience the benefits of learning to work hard and the responsibilities.
Linda?
Linda Ryder, a Fair Board member, for the record. The expo hall, I have a whole basket of master plans. This one is dated 1991. And in that study, and in all of these studies for all these years, it has been pointed out that our community needs a good place together, which an expo hall gives us. And through the years, we've had the Jaclyn Building, which was given to us. So it was a recycled building. And in time, we put the sides on it. We put the floor on it. We put bathrooms on it. And it became a gathering place for our community. But we find that it's much too small for many times. It has no air conditioning. Our community deserves something better. And so this expo hall would give us that. It would give the ability to have rooms that could be broken into different sizes and a big room where you could have six, 700 people gathered, which would be a good plus for our community.
With that, on that slide, the images that you saw were actually the new building recently finished in Canyon County. I think they had their grand opening last year. So that expo hall KO and Consult, or Crossroads Consulting were involved in as well. So moving on, again, I just want to say this is going to be a, a very high-level overview of what the master plan is for the sake of time. The teams from KO and Crossroads are on the line. If there's any place where you guys have a question and you want some clarification, don't hesitate to hop in there and, and ask. So our current facility is 81 acres. It has 26 buildings, three arenas, 42 campsites. This is just a layout of the land and, and what you can see from an overview. Oh, we just skipped like 20 slides. No, we didn't. We're good. Sorry. Moving on, it's to our market analysis, which was a big part of when we started this process, was in 2020. And at that point in time, the county came to us and said, hey, we really want to see this market analysis. So you guys did help fund a portion of the master plan, and this is the piece that you guys really wanted. So we've gathered extensive feedback from stakeholders and continued, or, and conducted thorough market analysis. This included a kickoff meeting, attending the fair, analyzing local market conditions, historical operating data, competitive facilities, and pure facility operation, or, and pure facility operations, along with outreach of users. This was an incredibly important piece to the project, and it goes into extensive pages of detail within the master plan. So I'm going to let you guys jump into that if you need more clarification. But our market research has identified key opportunities for growth, which are essential for prioritizing and recommending physical improvements. The market segment analysis is, again, crucial for understanding the demand and potential. So our areas for potential growth include fair and community social events. So everything within this master plan is not just for the fair. It does help enhance the fair, but it really does touch all of those community events. The, the various fundraisers we have, Rockin' Mountain Elk, Cowboy Ball, there's, there's a lot of them. So that is truly the high-demand piece. Like I've said before in several meetings, we just don't have the space anymore to accommodate what our community needs. Moderate demand is expos, exhibits, meeting space, horse shows, rodeos, livestock, small animal, and agricultural events. So there is a need for that, but not as quite at high demand. And then the, the low demand is entertainment, sports. And that doesn't mean we don't want to do some of those things. It just means in the area, we have local casinos that are competing for entertainment dollars. We don't want to compete with the Spokane Arena. That's way bigger than we ever want to be. So, so that demand is a bit lower. So not to, you probably can't even see it if you're in the back of the room, but enhancing facilities, existing facilities that are in poor condition, which is quite a few of them. They're, they're in need. We've done our best to keep them up, but it's time to invest more. Improving the overall functionality of the fairgrounds, including the circulation and wayfinding. If you've been there on a weekend where we have five events, and that does happen, it is very difficult to figure out where to park and where to be. And our team spends a lot of time helping wayfind for individuals, whether it be in the parking lot or actually in the facility. Developing a new event center with a minimum of 6,000 seats, column-free concrete floor, multipurpose. Lost. Oh, it's back. Multipurpose and divisible, so we could do multiple functions in the same space. Or, you know, if you want to have a wedding on one side, you can transition over to your reception on the other side very seamlessly. Supporting amenities, like I said, meeting rooms, storage, kitchen space, restrooms, pre-function space. And then an alternate from an event center with 6,000 indoor seating would be enhancing the grandstands to at least 6,000. We need to increase the number of stalls. In order to get the big horse shows in the area, we need 200 stalls. Right now, I think we have 86. And then adding RV spaces near the horse stalls would be very helpful.
Are you still on Phase One?
Yes. No, I'm sorry. That's just overall. That's the overall look of it. Yeah. I'll get there. This is the overall rendering of what it potentially could look like. And I want to say potentially because if you've gone through a master plan, it, it does take many, many years to accomplish the whole thing. This whole master plan would be around $280 million to do all of the extras, all of the fluff, and make sure it's just perfect. So obviously, it's phased out, and I'll show you how that's done. This is the 3D rendering of what it potentially could look like. I think it's a very fun image to dream, and that is what we are good at at the fairgrounds. We love to dream big and bring it to life. So this would be the vision if it were all to come to fruition one day. This, again, is the overhead. And the reason it's, you can see it's color-coded, and there's a number on every one of those. Those numbers correspond with the buckets that we've created for phasing purposes. So you can see that in time, we literally touch every piece of this facility in order to make it exactly what we've dreamed of. So obviously, purple is number one, and I'll jump right into that. Here's the phased approach and the budget. Bucket one would be an expo hall, and barn 35 is what we're going to call it. It's going to cost about $50 million. That would be an expo hall of just over 49,000 square feet, a livestock barn with 25,000 square feet. That livestock barn, I don't want you to get it in your mind that it's only for livestock. It would have concrete floors. It would be able to be washed out and used for, let's say Vintage Market needed some more indoor space. That's what that building would also be. So a multipurpose building as well. It would have admin space for the fair and extension services. That's something that I know was important to you all, was that we eventually become the home for the University of Idaho Extension Services. That is a part of that plan. It would have a drop-off loop, new entries, improved infrastructure, and improved parking. You're going to see every one of these phases includes improved infrastructure and improved parking. So that's something that will continue throughout. Bucket two is a new maintenance building, renovations to buildings one, two, three, and several more at the cost of about $11 million. That would also address the outdoor arena at that point in time, too. Bucket three is another livestock barn, barn 34. Again, same feeling, multipurpose use building. And hoop barns, the hoop barns would be the point where we get those 200 stalls in, and we can actually put in bids for regional AQHA horse shows, or raining shows, cutting shows, things like that. A new livestock entry gate, walk-up gates. Bucket four, oh, I'm sorry. That was at the cost of $57 million approximately. Bucket four is an expanded campground, $4 million. Again, improved infrastructure and improved parking, but also growing that. The, the RV park has been great for us as far as revenue goes year-round. Or not year-round, but as far as improving our revenue stream. Bucket five, circulation and gates, $7 million enhanced ticket gates, new walkways, roads. Truly helps address a lot of that circulation issue that we've had, experienced when we're servicing multiple events. And then lastly, bucket six is an indoor arena. And this is a huge indoor arena that would sit approximately 6,000 people, and we would be able to host year-round. It wouldn't matter the weather. We wouldn't have to worry about rain or smoke or anything like that when concert season rolls around. That would be a huge, huge change for us. That would come at the cost of $98 million. Any questions there?
Yes. So was that all the phases? Or is that just Phase One?
That's all the phases. That's everything. So bucket one is Phase One.
Gotcha.
Yep. And Jessica will go into that a little bit more in a minute.
Sure. Questions? This, Bruce?
Okay. Sorry, I feel like I'm going very, very fast here. The Economic Impact Study has been in the paper recently, so you might already be very familiar with it. But it reveals substantial benefits to the local economy. The fairgrounds draw visitors from outside of the county, boosting economic prosperity, local businesses, and provide enriching, family-friendly entertainment for all ages and groups. They also unite the community and preserve customs for our future generations while supporting youth education and agriculture. In summary, exciting. We see approximately 120,000 people come to the fair for non-fair events, 168,000 for fair, and then that's nearly 300,000 visitors every year come to the grounds. There we go. So it's estimated that 19.1 million in direct spending. This is people spending money in our hotels, in our restaurants, in our local shops. This is the direct piece. The $30 million is the total output. That's essentially the ripple effect of what happens that's due strictly to people coming to this facility. So it's supporting 260 jobs and generating more than half a million dollars in taxes for local, at the local level. And, I mean, this is pretty self-explanatory with the benefits, obviously. Of course, we're, we're drawing people in, and we're boosting the economy. We're serving as a first-class venue for the community in all their event needs, in, in every area of life, supporting our local businesses, including our nonprofit entities, which is a, a big one that we touch. I don't think we need to walk through it all, but this is a time-honored tradition, and we serve to support youth education and agriculture. All right. So now, now that we've dreamed it, and we, we went over it very, very quickly. Jessica's going to walk you through what Phase One timeline looks like and how we turn this dream into a reality.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by expressing our gratitude to KO Foundground Fairgrounds Planners and Crossroads Consulting for their invaluable guidance in navigating us towards creating the vision that propels us forward. With their support, we are embarking on an ambitious 10-year plan for Phase One of our project. Phase One is a pivotal stage that involves both securing funding and completing construction. Our timeline outlines a strategic approach. First, we anticipate a five-year period dedicated to fundraising, during which we will actively engage with various stakeholders and sources of support. Following this, the construction phase is projected to take between three and five years, ensuring careful planning and execution to achieve our objectives. The financial scope of Phase One is significant, amounting to 50 million in total. Here's how we plan to raise these funds. Pivotal donors, I apologize, private donors. The long-term lease is finalized. We are confident that within a short period of time, we can secure 20% of our funding goals through private donors who share our vision and commitment. Grants. We will actively pursue grants from reputable sources such as FEMA, USDA, along with state and local entities. These grants will play a crucial role in supporting our efforts to reach our financial targets. No burden on taxpayers. Importantly, we have made a firm commitment to not request funds from our taxpayers. Our funding is strategy, our funding strategy is focused on sustainable sources that align with our mission and values. Together, with the collective efforts of our supporters and partners, we are confident that Phase One will not only meet, but exceed expectations. It is through collaboration, dedication, and strategic planning that we will bring our vision to completion and make the lasting impact in our community. Thank you.
I'm just going to summarize what you've already heard. We're obviously excited about what our opportunities here at the fairgrounds are. I don't think anybody, you'd have to be blind to understand that our community has changed. I, I can just speak for myself. Since I graduated from Coeur d'Alene High School in 1968, our Cooten County's population was 35,000. It's now 183,578 as of 2022. So it's probably exceeded that at this, by this point, which is a 424% increase. Just in the since 1999, a short 25 years ago, over 100,000 new residents now call our county home. Our fairgrounds are challenged to keep up. We're centrally positioned at the present time to do just that. As a vision, as you guys saw the vision today as, as, in very, very brief form as to what we plan to do and how we plan to get there, we're eager to begin the implementation of Phase One of our planet, evolving our fairgrounds with upgrades, renovations, and new additions, and a plethora of opportunities that these improvements offer. Our motivation is really quite simple, to delight our visitors, to elevate our ability to continue to offer our community high-quality entertainment, increased venues for vendors and sponsors, add more support for our nonprofit businesses, and expand educational opportunities such as 4H and Farm-to-Table, all the while bringing growing and robust economic benefits to the region. This was something you could expect from what has become our go-to event center in Cooten County. Along with, with assurances that we're going to remain in our current location, your Fair Board, the North Idaho Fair and, and Rodeo Foundation volunteers and supporters will have boots on the ground and enthusiastically begin raising funds to launch our plan. And we're, as Jessica stated, we're committed to achieving this plan while incurring no additional burden on our taxpayers. So I want to thank you for all, all for support, and then all of you that are supporting us and that will continue to support us. And I think now it's time for us to get into a periodic question and answers with our Commissioners.
How much are you raising for Phase One?
Your microphone.
Sorry. How much are you raising for Phase One?
The goal is $50 million.
$50 million? And so 20% is to be raised from private sources. So you have, you're expecting to raise 10 million?
Yes, sir.
Are you, do you have commitments from people? Or is this kind of what you're hoping to achieve?
We have some funds already raised. We have commitments from people, but we've talked before, the security is not there. And that's why we did bring up that lease earlier.
And then can you talk a little bit about the federal grants? Because, you know, as I learn more about those, you end up being committed to things well into the future if you accept the money. And so what, talk about what those strings might be if you're going to seek federal money and what the commitments would be on the county if they were to accept that money.
And that might be something maybe Chip can weigh in on at some point. But I'm not, we would be hiring a grant writer to help us secure these funds. As far as what you guys would be liable to, I don't know those answers yet because I'm not about to march down the road if I don't have your blessing.
Yeah. Well, it puts us in a chicken-or-egg situation. What comes first? You know, I, I mean, I'm very supportive of the fair sticking around at that location for a while. But without understanding the details, I'd be very leery of committing this community to, to obligations that we didn't understand.
I mean, I don't think there would be a single grant that you guys wouldn't be 100% aware of before we even marched forward with it.
Well, no, I understand that part, but it just helps as far as making longer-term decisions to understand your plan. And, you know, and I recognize the fact that, you know, this is kind of like a business plan. So there's a lot of ifs, you know? And the question is, you know, what are those ifs? What are the commitments with those ifs? And how realistic are they? And I've seen this a lot in the private sector. And, you know, on paper, they always sound great. But in execution is when that, you know, you start to have reality hit you in the face, if you will. And so that's what I'm just trying to understand is, is this a plan because you, you've been able to, to put these pieces together to equal 50 million? Or is this, we are sure we can achieve this? We know that with a commitment on time at that location, we can raise the 20% privately. We know where the grants are that we could be looking at. And we know, you know, that we're going to be able to make our budgetary requirements. Because another thing, too, is what happens if you fall short on your fundraising or your grants? Would the taxpayer not be burdened with trying to finish a project if the money run out halfway through? And those are all the what-ifs that we just have to kind of think about a little bit. So, but conceptually, I, I think you've thought it through. You know, and you have a good sense as to where you want to go. So those are my questions. So those are my questions.
Bill?
I, I agree. You said if we can stay where we are. I agree with that. It's important, stability. And I know this community supports that fair. It's amazing. We had a little meeting about the fair and there was standing room only in this room. They just showed up and it was a miserable day, but they showed up anyway. It was so hot the goat wanted to leave. He was out there. But have you ever fallen short on a fundraising goal?
We're in the practice of raising the funds before we, we're in the practice of making sure we have the funds before we build anything.
Okay.
We've become very able to make ends meet.
I think you're highly responsible, as are the other members of that board. And I've been fortunate to be the liaison to the fair board for a year, and I have never seen a group of people that work together better and are more committed to this fair being successful. And they understand that it's a community, it's a community proposition. It's, we're all in it together, literally, and it always works out well. And the fair itself is just the, literally the tip of the iceberg, and I love to go there. And I'll even ride the rides. It's just so fun. The attitude is electric. It's great.
Any questions for our master planner? He's on the line.
I don't, I just have one for you. How much do you have right now? How much funds do you have towards?
So in our actual funds right now for the fair grounds, we have about $2.5 million in our facility fund. We've just received, and it's not we, but the fair foundation has recently received a donation of half a million dollars from a state. And we have, like I said, commitments out there that can get us to that 20% goal, but in speaking with a lot of them, they're not willing to offer up funds if we don't have a secure location. And we can halt the rumors.
Okay. Any questions for the master plan writer?
No, not at this point. Thank you.
Okay.
That event center, I just, that really sounds spectacular. I don't think there's any venue like that in our area, is there? I mean, including, including Seattle.
I don't know that I can speak to that. I don't know that I could speak to that, but.
Well, I can't think of any.
If you've been down to Canyon County, we're looking at something similar to that building.
But it will attract a lot of, a lot more events. How many events did you have last year?
It was around 240 events for 700 and approximately 50 event days.
240?
Different events, yes.
That's hard, it's hard to imagine, but I know it's true. It's really wonderful. And it's, it's a, it's a good place for the community to meet, but I think we've got the right person. I'm glad you're doing what you're doing because you make it, you make it happen. You're the conductor.
We're already booked into 2025, well into 2025.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, I won't go on, but thank you.
I do have one question. What is the expected timeframe for completing all the phases?
All of the phases?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness. Well, if the first one's going to take us 10 years, I can't imagine what the rest of them are going to take, so. Our hope is in 10 years, we can finish Phase One.
Okay.
I would, you know what? I'm always optimistic when it comes to these things. I'd say I'd love to see it in 30 years. I'd love to see it before then, but that's a lot of money to raise and we are a small but mighty crew. I don't know.
Does the dollar estimate take into account future expenses or is that today's dollars?
I'm sorry?
Well, I think the total was a couple hundred million, a little over that. So are those today's dollars to achieve that vision or are those tomorrow's dollars to achieve that vision?
Tomorrow's dollars, there's an escalation.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Chip could probably speak to that more if he wanted him to.
Okay. I mean, I certainly appreciate the fact that if you have nicer facilities, you'll have nicer events. You'll draw more people from further distances. Thank you.
Thank you.
What are your plans for some of the things that don't, not the big-ticket items, like some of the things that the plan mentioned about getting a better process for contracts and booking and, and things like that?
Well, that's something we're always working on, so there's various platforms out there that help us with the booking, but right now we've got a pretty good system. If we were to grow exponentially in an event center like this, we would need to, there's an event, Event Pro is one that we've looked into that we seem to like. Is that what you're questioning?
Yeah, I mean, there was a bunch of stuff in here that did not require a lot of funds. And so I just was curious on what your plan was for those items.
Yeah, maybe I'm not picking up exactly what.
You know, we're really fortunate to belong to an international association of fairs and expos, as well as a couple of other fair organizations that are national, regional, that, that have, many of their members have gone through what we're anticipating going through right now. And we'll certainly draw on the expertise that is available to us there and, and, and not reinvent the wheel on some of these items, such as what you're talking about as far as event planning and some of those kinds of things. So fortunately, there have been people that have gone ahead of us and will just stand on their shoulders and help and get information and assistance from them wherever we, and whenever we need to. That's, and we have very good relationships with those organizations that Alexia has cultivated very well.
In addition to the funding, do you all agree that stability in our parking location is essential to the success of the plan?
Yes.
So.
Absolutely.
Do I, any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, that's both of our items then? That's all you had planned? Okay. Well, I will call for public comment and we have just about 20 minutes. Mr. Masterson?
That's great, as long as it's not for one person, right?
Oh, correct, yes. Yeah, you have three minutes.
If you haven't watched that YouTube video from the meeting that was held on the 10th, I strongly suggest that all the county commissioners do so. I also suggest that the public watch it. It was very interesting, but as you watch it, pay very close attention to what you hear and what the message of that meeting was. It was very obvious from the turnout and all the comments, both from the panel members and the public comment, that the fairgrounds needs to stay where it is and move forward through this master plan. It was particularly interesting to me that the panel members discussed such a wide variety of topics. And I don't think that any of the panel members knew what each other was going to say, but the range of things that was covered in there was just unbelievable. And the support for those comments, as they was talked about by the panel members, was also very impressive. I'm not, the message was loud and clear, again, from the response there, that the Board of Commissioners needs to support the existing fairgrounds where it is, we can't afford to replace it, and then move it forward through this master plan. I know it's expensive, but, you know, as a member of the fair foundation and the other members of the fair foundation, and I'm not speaking for them, but I know from their heart that we will all work very hard to make this happen. And I know it, like I say, I know it is very expensive, but we do need to move it forward. And just a side note, and many people in the audience are aware of this, I have been across the United States probably no less than 200 times, both north and south and east and west, hauling horses. And every time I have to spend a night on the road, I always seek out local fairgrounds for a couple of reasons. One thing, they're a lot cheaper and I always want to make a comparison to what I grew up with in Cutney County. And you will be hard-pressed to find a fairgrounds that is even close to comparable to the fairgrounds that we have in Cutney County. I mean, not only from the facilities, and yes, they need some improvements as we move forward, but also from the personnel that work at those fairgrounds and the support that they give to people that are visiting those fairgrounds.
Do you have one last final thought? Because you, you're at your three minutes and if there's other people who want to speak, I'd like to.
Okay, I just have one more quick sentence. I strongly suggest that you agree to a long-term lease with the fair board in support of this master plan. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Thank you. I want to thank the commissioners for the opportunity to provide the fair board and the fair staff to showcase the master plan. I also want to thank.
Sir, can I get your name?
Yeah, I'll introduce myself as well, but Dave Paul. I want to thank Commissioner Brooks for setting up the future of the Fair Town Hall, where as he mentioned, hundreds of people showed up to discuss how important our fairgrounds is, not only to our local community, but to thousands of others who benefit. As I mentioned, my name is Dave Paul. I'm a 29-year resident of Falls Falls, Cutney County. I live out in the prairie, have all of those 29 years. I'm also the chair, the current chairman of the Jump State Stampede Rodeo. And as such, I volunteered at the fairgrounds at least for the last 19 years, all kinds of things in addition, in addition to the rodeo. But working alongside the fair staff, the fair board, collectively, we've built that rodeo into a national showcase, one of the best pro rodeos in the Columbia River Circuit, Idaho, Oregon, and Washington. This year's our 38th anniversary. What started several years ago as a small local rodeo has now become a destination. It's hard to get a ticket. Already our Thursday, Friday, Saturday rodeos are primarily sold out or broadcast on national TV, et cetera, et cetera. But actually, I'm not here to talk as much about the rodeo. We couldn't have the rodeo without the fairgrounds. And the fairgrounds is a North Idaho historical site for sure. The events held each week throughout the year are extremely important to our economy, our community. 4H, FFA, rodeos, livestock shows, animals, and farm and ranch families are the background of Cutney County and North Idaho. And for me, I've been in the egg business for 43 years and it's about keeping egg alive in Cutney County. And trust me, as living on the prairie for 29 years where I am, where it was all grassfields when I moved here, and now it's all subdivisions, you know, it's heart-wrenching. Wednesday night at our upcoming rodeo is, the first Wednesday night, we're going to do a rodeo actually, but it's egg appreciation night at the fair. And we're going to honor four legendary farm families in Cutney County, all with many generations of history producing food in the area, all huge supporters of the fairgrounds since its inception, the Beck's, the McLean's, the Myers, and the Ryder families. All four of these families, along with thousands of other volunteers, have made it a goal to serve our local community and inspire local youth to serve and participate in many livestock and rodeo activities. The Cutney County Fairgrounds is like the last great spot in this area for these kinds of events to keep egg alive, as well as here locally. And you guys heard about the economic impact study that Alexia talked about, just shows how important this is to our community and our county. Moving the fairgrounds in this economic environment really is not an option. In all honesty, the decision should have been made a long time ago. Instead, the fairgrounds continues to get eaten up piece by piece. It's so difficult right now to make improvements and plan without knowing what the direction is for the fairgrounds. And I would challenge you to not underestimate how hard it would be to move the fairgrounds out of Coeur d'Alene, not to mention how much it would cost. How would we expect to raise the millions and millions of dollars that would be necessary, hundreds of millions, to move and then build a new fairground? So I think it's an important question to ask, and I know it's not a question and answer period, but there needs to be a plan. This is one of the coolest places. It's in the center of town, a community gathering place. And as I mentioned, since I moved here 29 years ago, we've lost most of the prairie, so let's not lose our fairgrounds too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Dave Fair. I'm here to ask one simple thing. Please accept this final draft of this plan and move it from a draft to an adopted plan. Now, all plans start with a dream, and this community's been dreaming a long time. I know the 50 million for Phase One is a lot, but phases can be broken into pieces, one A, one B, one C. They will break it into as many pieces as it takes to make it happen. You know, the plan, the fair, it's about community. It's about what type of community we want to be, what type of community we are, what we celebrate. It's neighbors meeting neighbors. It's about quality of life. And the first step is adopting that plan. So I ask you, please, adopt it. Don't make it just a piece of paper that's sitting on a shelf or in Linda's basket. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Commissioners, my name is Chris Holloway, and I have the distinct privilege from running the fair from 1999 for another 14 years. I followed in the footsteps of Barb Brenner. And during Barb's tenure, there was a master plan created, there was a model created. And I think that same question always came out about moving the fairgrounds. It's a constant, moving the fairgrounds. During my tenure, we probably did an economic study, and I think we did two plans, basically trying to scale down, the second one just to make it reality and never having the opportunity to, at that time, look for funding as far as through the, some type of tax levy. The, so the fairgrounds has been a continual, on the agenda to be, you know, where do we, let's move it, even at the time when the land was cheap. But always it came up, the cost associated was always, it was not foreseeable. At this point in time, we are at an amazing opportunity. There is a foundation that has grown to be very strong with people who have so much passion for the fairgrounds. And I am just so excited to see Alexia, that one question, because we never stop to think about, you know, how do we make some type of agreement where we know that the fairgrounds will stay a fairgrounds? All of our studies pretty much said we are in the perfect location back when Barb had her study done, when we had our studies done. It's central to the community, and so I just really encourage you to consider this lease opportunity so that these people with lots of passion for the fairgrounds can move forward and make this dream a reality, because it's not a new dream. It's been on the books for years and years and years in the community. It'll be a gem for the community, so thank you for your time.
Okay, anyone else? All right, anybody on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom wants to make a comment on Meet Yourself? Then go ahead and state your comment.
Okay. 10:48, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.